Bring some sense to him. I haven't. You want to do it?
I will.
Okay, thank you. When you ask the question, I give you the answer, so it's good.
Don't ask, right?
We'd like to welcome you out this evening to our city council meeting, and we're glad you're here. Without you, we would probably have no one here, so. Thank you for coming, and you bring a certain amount of light into the room, and we appreciate that, so. I'm Mayor Easterson. I'll be conducting this meeting this evening. Councilmember Carolyn Lombard will offer an invocation, and after which Councilmember Vancheri will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, early evening, we are so grateful to be of sound mind and body to come together and conduct the business of the great community of Linden. We're so grateful for the opportunity to serve with many wonderful people and gather here this evening and celebrate the volunteers that have given so much and continue to give. We pray that as we review and discuss these items before us tonight that have been worked hard on by staff and many good hands, that we will be able to do so reasonably and with seeking thy guidance in all that we do. Again, we are grateful for many bounteous blessings and the freedom that we enjoy to be able to self-govern. And we ask thee to bless those that put themselves in harm's way and those in our community that have great need, either medically or in other challenges they may have, that we may look about how we can uplift one another. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Face the flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Mike, and thank you for the echo in the room. I heard my voice afterwards. That was amazing. Let's go ahead and start and do a roll call. Mike, you want to start us off?
Sure. Mike Vancheri, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Jeff Easterson, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Carolyn Lombard, present.
He's been asked to be excused this evening, so. Let's go ahead and review the minutes of the February 17th, 2021 meeting. Do you make any corrections?
I have no changes.
I read them. I have none.
By once going twice? Is there any?
Motion to approve the minutes from the February 17th, 2020 meeting?
Twenty twenty-one?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Jump into this one.
By Randy, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Van. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And let's go ahead and start council reports, and then we'll start with you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, honestly, I really don't have anything to report. Mike Florence and I meet fairly regularly, and he keeps me posted on most of what's going on, the developments and so forth. I'm sure some of you visit with him also. Nothing really to report. Things seem to be going pretty smooth.
Great. Okay, Randy?
Pretty much going to follow that with one little caveat. Had a citizen reach out to me with a concern about a streetlight in his particular area, and asked me to report that, and I said, you know what? Let's try out the new text.gov. And seemed to work quite well. He says, we'll see if it works, but it sounds like it's working. He was able to report that, so for everybody who doesn't know, we have a... If you go to text.gov, let's see, what is it? There's a phone number. Look at lyndoncity.org. And if you have any problem with the new city, you can start a work order yourself. So you can ask questions, but it'll... You'll start instigating on your text message. So it's pretty awesome.
Preferably a city problem. Not a dispute among siblings or anything like that, but any.
That's on there.
Okay, thanks. Van?
Yes, it is the season of water meetings, so I did attend the North Union Irrigation Company and their annual meeting. And I think Juan's been probably be in contact with you budgeting-wise for what our assessments will be, but it looks like that'll be about 110, and he was anxious to make sure that we appropriated the right amount. And then also attended the Provo Bench Canal and Irrigation Company meeting this last Saturday. There's about six different canals that takes the water before it actually gets to us and which we use for our secondary water. And so just a couple of things of note. Fortunately, some of the recent storms have brought us up to about 75% of normal, which is way below where we want to be, so we want to have that ongoing precipitation keep coming because we are desperately going to need it. We do think that the budget that we've allocated or the assessment on that one will stay the same, right around that 129 range, and so. The other, even though the amount of moisture is increasing, our soil moisture content is very low, so what we do get, somehow the earth decides it's going to take what it wants first before it comes down. So pleased with the committee or the companies, how hard they work to make things happen. They try to make sure that they use every drop appropriately and wisely and trying to get ready for our secondary water season coming up.
Okay, Carolyn?
Yes, the one thing I wanted to discuss with council is at our budget kickoff meeting, I apologize, I neglected to bring up one small item, and I discussed it with Kristen today, Kristen Coulson. So Shelley Church, as you know, our city employee collects the annual grants that are applied for the city grant to the local classrooms, and I work with her each year on that, and this year we had... We have a budget of 1,000 that we've not changed for quite a few years. Typically, we're looking to do about $100 grant for those that we deem worthy projects for the teachers. And this year, we had all six schools and 19 grant applications, which some of them were bunches of teachers banding together for, say, the whole fourth grade. And it was really tough to distribute among many worthy applications for our children in the classroom because teachers often don't have a budget to do some of these things. And I just thought I'd share with you really quickly. Some of the grants were used for, and we're now getting letters of thank... You know, Shelley gets thank yous and pictures of what the kids did. So this year, we had grants at Rocky Mountain for picture books, for the speech language program. The Portuguese class was able to get some things to do, a Portuguese market. Linden Elementary, we had grants for the entire fourth grade to do special books and about for the art STEM supplies for 700 students, flashcards, headphones, Hope Squad, which is kind of the mental health group. Aspen Elementary, we were able to give small grants for spelling dictionaries, more headphones. The school counselor had a special program for, again, mental health. And then masks for the art class. Then Oak Canyon, we were able to do some... They had a creative writing class, needed some materials for different book talks. And Mazer High, we helped with paint for a mural at the school, the drama class, and also the science class with some chicks, hatching chicks and study that. So and last year, there were some fantastic ones, too. We were able to find donations from the community to help supplement what we could not give to meet all the needs that were requested. So Kristen said today that she would go ahead and add in, and we can discuss this further in our next budget meeting to maybe bump that up from where it's been so that we can, now that it's a really well-known resource and it does a lot of good for the kids in the community, so.
Carolyn, how many applicants in the years that you've been over this? I mean, is this last... This last year been exponentially more, or?
That's a great question.
When I was doing this, we were having a hard time getting enough to fill the $1,000. And I'm imagining we've got a lot more creative abilities in our teachers to reach out and grab that money?
Yes, it almost had to be, you know, broadcasted more to try to find enough applicants. We had, like I said, 19 official applications, but those applications, as far as teachers and classrooms, that the outreach was probably at least 50 teachers because many of them would combine together. And it has, I think there's a greater awareness that it's available, and teachers need supplies for some of these, you know, art STEM, you know, different things that they're trying to do as enrichment for their classes. So it looks like last year, we had more than we had in the past, and this year it's increasing so far.
I look forward to hearing more.
Okay.
Is that it, Carolyn?
That was all for tonight.
All right, Adam?
Just a few things, just an FYI. Our next meeting's March 15th and then April 5th. We do have the dumpster spring cleanup with the dumpsters around town. April 10th through the 20th is when those are scheduled. And we'll get that out in the newsletter and social media posts. Kristen, just a reminder, you've got April newsletter, so. And then this is the last week for legislative session up at the state. And cities have sure taken a beating. I don't know how else to phrase it, but not a lot of... A lot of things that have gone on without concern from the cities. So let me give you an update on a few things that are happening, bills that are still ongoing or just have some resolution to them. And FYI, the secondary water metering mandate that came down from the state last year, there's been a bill that was proposed, and I need to check and see where this is at, that put a 2030 deadline to have all secondary meter installed citywide. What's that?
Unfunded mandate?
Yes. However, they do have a grant program that is currently in place. It's not very much. I mean, it was a couple million is what was put into this new bill.
Statewide.
Statewide. So I don't know how many entities are applying for that. That's something for us to consider, and it's a matching grant. And so do we want to pursue that ahead of time versus wait until everybody's trying to do it at the last minute? So that's a conversation that we need to have, so. The Utah Lake Authority, this was a bill by Representative Brammer, and originally started out as essentially something similar to the inland port authority, where it was a separate taxing entity that would have jurisdiction over Utah Lake within its high water line, essentially. It changed several times through a lot of drafts in a lot of the cities around the perimeter of the lake. Representative Brammer was very accommodating to try to rewrite some things there. Ended up being held in committee for the interim for additional study, but we expect that one will come back. It did have multiple board members, one of which was Linden City, at least for the first year. Part of the charge, that's the way the bill was drafted when it went to committee, was essentially that the committee needs to come up with a funding mechanism recommendation. And so it did include a taxing authority, and so. Just an FYI, that's a big issue that we'll have to keep our eye on. Sales?
Do you have bill numbers for any of these we're talking about?
Yes, I can send those to you, so.
Adam, have they gotten any specifics as to what they are looking at doing with the lake? I mean, are they still looking at some dredging? Are they looking at a causeway?
This was, they are still looking at an island. They are looking at a potential bridge across the lake. Those are both ideas that are pretty far out there in years and implementation. But the bill was specifically written for, had some conclusions that would allow the island concept where land could be donated if they were actually improving water quality as part of that concept. And so it seemed very much written to help accommodate that specific idea, so.
A little off topic, but it's sort of related. The carp, I know that for years they've been doing commercial carp fishing. I saw here a while ago a lake in somewhere in Iowa where they put a levee down the middle, and they took all the carp out of the one side, and the other side, they kept them. And then in about two years, the side that didn't have the carp was crystal blue. It was just, well, I don't know. Have you heard anything at all about whether or not?
They are continuing with their carp removal programs, and it's been successful to an extent. The June sucker recovery program has also been successful. Those were actually delisted, is my understanding, so they are no longer on the endangered species list. So they're making progress, but I know that is probably a never-ending effort with the carp. Have you ever seen how many eggs those things produce, so? A couple other ones, there was several bills that were at least drafted but didn't make it out of committee that tried to change the sales tax distribution model. That is one that continuously pops up.
That was a good debate. I mean, it was, anyway, that's...
Let's see, the digital billboards, this is one that did not pass out of committee. There was an article in KSL about that. Basically, it... The way it was drafted is if some cities allow a digital sign of whatever size for their businesses, that then billboards within that same zone would be allowed to be converted to be digital. For Linden itself, we already allow digital billboards, and they are only permitted along the freeway. And so it wasn't a significant change for us, but some of our neighboring cities were very concerned, so.
It seemed like, Carolyn and I happened to be at a meeting with Senator Bramble, and he spoke to this issue. And I asked him about this, and he just seemed very not cognizant or willing to recognize cities like us who are good at playing this. We have ordinances in place, and we are fair players in this market. It seemed like we could be easily penalized within, outside of our, is it a T-zone, what we call it? That we could easily be penalized on the interior of our cities. It's just based on, and it just, I don't know, it just rubbed me the wrong way, the way it was presented to us.
Interestingly, he did vote no on it, though.
Oh, okay. I didn't follow that. Thank you.
At least from what I...
That one had, it was...
He seemed to be supporting when we talked to him, but...
Yes, very supportive.
And that specific bill, I think they heard the cities loud and clear on that one, so.
Okay, good. Thank you.
A few other ones, there's some bills that modify building permit issuance requirements, put some additional standards on the city. Another one that prohibits cities from requiring any architectural standards, fencing, or landscaping requirements on one and two-family dwellings. That one is expected to pass.
Is that Val Peterson's?
I don't know the answer to that, so. Short-term rentals, there was a bill that was held in a committee by Senator Andereg, and we expect that'll be brought up in commission again, that further limits how cities can regulate short-term rentals. Accessory dwelling units, the League worked a lot with, there was a couple different bills and the one that seemed to move forward. We're at a neutral position as far as whether we would oppose or support. It allows the city to regulate no more than one parking space requirement. We can look at lot size and street frontage and a few other things, but essentially allows ADUs throughout most of the city, and so if it's zoned residential.
Those are internal ADUs, right?
They are internal, so you can't have one in the backyard or above in a detached garage. It would be internal only. There's a, let's see, several public safety and police-related bills, most of which the cities supported, requiring additional training or reporting. Transportation funding, a huge transportation bill that was discussed today in the League Legislative Policy Committee. Some of those funds that are being appropriated would go towards widening of 1600 North, which we share a border on. Also looking at UTA's double-track initiative so that the commuter rail can have faster commute times, completing some of the Vineyard Connector up to where the new commuter rail stop will be in Vineyard. And then also, just an FYI, that it included widening State Street from Pleasant Grove through American Fork to Seven Lanes. And so it's a similar project to what we experienced here a few years ago. Let's see, and then there is SB 52 is this property tax deferral we mentioned a couple weeks ago. It's changed now to where deferrals can be requested if some, a resident is over 70, meets a certain income test, has lived in their home for 15 years or more, and has approval from their mortgage lending company if it's still money owed, where they can defer their property taxes. And so that is expected to pass. Let's see, Senate Bill 113, this was one that got held in committee but we think may come up again, that required a city or local government entity cannot lease a vehicle or equipment for less than three years. And the buzz that I heard from some other city managers was this was dealership in a more rural area that was frustrated with being outbid, essentially, by other dealers and feeling like these short-term lease opportunities were impacting their bottom line. And so somebody got a hold of that and ran this bill. Again, that did not pass, but it sounds like that may resurface, so. And then this last one, Senate Bill 199, it's a water rate increase. Any increases that a city or water provider initiates cannot exceed 10% annually without sending a specific mailed notice to all of its customers. And so increases that noticing requirement if, for whatever reason, that water provider has to increase rates beyond 10% in any calendar year, so.
Is that only, that's secondary water, isn't it? That's what I thought it was.
I would have to look into that.
I'm pretty sure it's just secondary water service, so.
But 10% is, that's pretty, that could be a high threshold.
Yeah?
I don't see it being an initiative.
It takes a long time to get...
I'm pretty sure it is secondary water.
Depends on what's occurring. I mean, if the city has to build a new... Yeah, if you have to build a new water tank or things, there's, yeah, or the metering, and so. Couple other items, just an FYI. Any questions on the legislative issues?
I have one.
Yeah, me too.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, please, go ahead.
I just had a resident that reached out, just wanting to follow... We had discussed our own accessory dwelling regulations to try to make them a little more friendly. And we had talked about changing from requiring two stalls to one stall, and it sounds like it may potentially be statewide. But that is not on the books yet currently. Is that correct?
Correct.
We're still needing to have a legislative action come forward on those?
Yes.
Okay, and then...
Pretty sure it's gonna, it'll probably come through.
Yeah, this state one, it's very likely to be.
And then also, right now, this resident told me that Planning Department told them that a separate outside entrance is required here in Linden. Any discussion on the state level with an ADU being internal? If they have to have an outside entrance, or they could have just an internal garage entrance or even within the same household?
I'll have to look at that, Carolyn, because it changed a few times just in the last couple of weeks. And so it did at one point prevent cities from regulating door placements, but I think that changed. And so I'll look into that and let you know.
As far as we're concerned, we currently do not allow the entrance to be within, say, the interior of a garage.
It has to be an exterior entrance, yeah.
So that was something, I'll chat with Mike about that, but that may be something also to bring up with when we bring that forward here within the city. Are we going to just wait to see how the session kind of pans?
The last time I talked to Mike, that was the assumption is, hey, this is really fluid at the state level. Let's see what happens, and...
Just have a week to go, and then we'll know when we sit.
Yeah, it ends this, is it Friday, I believe, was the last day?
Yep, Friday, midnight, so.
Okay.
That's always the funnest to be online and watch that one go down.
Just quickly, I want to clarify on this building permit process. I know that they've set some time limits as to, within a certain period, the plans have to be reviewed. If the building permit has to be issued, they have the option of getting an outside engineer to review the plans and so forth, et cetera. Seems like maybe something you sent out, we're well within those time limits as a city. I mean, we're...
We strive to meet that timeframe already, and so...
Yeah, that's what I thought. So we really don't have too much to worry about there, then?
Correct. Yeah, when I've talked to Phil and Gary and Mike, that's their impression as well.
Okay, good.
If it's not met within that timeframe, it is assumed
that it's already approved.
So it's ticking. If you don't get it done, yeah.
Just a couple other items I sent out today, this email on the fraud prevention training. It takes a solid hour, and there's quizzes after every little video segment that you have to get 100% on. So if you don't get it, then you have to retake the little course.
If I've already taken it, do I just have to show you the certificate?
Yes, and so it is only required once during your elected term. And so if you've done that within your term of office, so.
Yeah, I did that with UTA, so.
Yeah, if you'll forward me that certificate, that'd be awesome.
If you mind during the video sacrament meeting.
And then just an FYI, the Hutchison property that we've been looking at for future park expansion contacted them, and they indicated that they have a first, and they were taking paperwork on a second offer that they've accepted. And so it sounds very unlikely that they would entertain the city's interest in that property, so. Thank you, Mayor.
You still with us? Oh, you guys are good. That's so good. Well, thank you. So, yeah, we're next. Who's going to lead us in this one? Little Miss Linden, here we go.
We should have her at the microphone.
Pull your mask down, sir. You either got to go up to the microphone. Thank you.
Actually, sit down if you want, if it's more comfortable. Or you can pull it up like this if you'd like.
We'd like to thank you guys for helping us even this year, even though it's kind of crazy, for helping us with our Little Miss Linden. And we'd also like to thank Kylie for her service in our Little Miss Linden royalty. And yes, that's it.
All right.
So I'd like to bring up this past year's royalty, which is Tessa, our queen, come on up. And Emmy Christensen, Kylie Christensen, Ellery Horn, and Lakin Porter. So this is, come up, girls. Kylie, Emmy, Ellery, Lakin. And as noted by Tessa, that Kylie is not continuing for another year of service. So with the help of the auditors, Laura Everingham, she's the one that comes every year for our audit and our committee, we have chosen and selected a new royalty member based on scores through last pageant. And that will be, we'll have Kylie introduce her. Or I will. It's Carly Nelson, so come on up. And Kylie will be crowning her.
You like each other. Come on.
This is all new, so I know it's, you know, it's...
It's our very first time ever replacing the members.
Yes. How exciting.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, Kylie, for your service, and we are so excited to get to work with Carly. She is the daughter of Carl and, I don't know where Lori went. Oh, Lori Nelson, and they live in Linden, so we're excited.
Hey, the mom didn't get the photo up. I think she needed... Can you come?
Yeah, come and take whatever time you need.
Come on up here if you'd like.
Yes, get your pictures. This is a very important time of your life.
Yeah.
Although you young ladies don't think so, it is. I had a mother that was shooting pictures all the time.
Okay, and you go. Everyone just pull down your mask for a second so we can get a cute picture.
Now, in the past, we've had council stand behind them. Would you like us to do that?
Yes, we want council to come behind you. One, two, three. All right, come on in, council and mayor.
Well, Jake's going to be disappointed. He's not here.
Everyone, student, Carly, pull your mask down just a little bit and see your cute face. Here we go. Ready, one, two, three. He's smiling. Don't move yet. Finally, don't move yet, moms are still clicking. Hold still, hold still. Okay. Thank you, and we will, um, we'll be doing our pageant next March, so we'll see, fingers crossed.
Good job, ladies.
Next March. All right. We're leaving.
Thank you for all you do, your service. Go Linden, all right. Open it up for open session, anyone here to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda?
Your chance, Kristen.
Move on to the consent agenda item? I believe that's, approve the annual report, is that right?
It's actually the municipal water planning program report that's already been submitted to the state, but the council has to say, yes, they've, you've seen it and is okay with it, so this is something we do every year.
Go ahead, someone want to make the motion to accept it?
I'll make the motion. Oh, go ahead, Van.
I move to approve the, just the consent agenda items as presented.
I love it, man, we're, we're getting through this.
We'll have a co-second.
So a second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we need to open up a public hearing on the, someone?
I'll make a motion, how's that?
Thank you, Randy, is there a second? Thank you, Van, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing. It's the Budget and Fee Schedule Amendment. Kristen, how you doing?
Good, how are you guys?
Good. Boy, that's terrible, we have a meeting and then everybody leaves, I mean, it's like, woo.
We talked about twenty million dollars and no one's here, we talked about replacing the Little Miss Linden, and the place is packed.
That's what's important.
So I don't know if you had a chance to review the budget amendment. About an hour and a half ago, I sent out a revised one. So for the general fund, there's revenues that are coming in, in development, in cemetery, and then with the police vehicle lease, that are actually, the revenues are greater than the expenses, the increase in expenses that are proposed in this budget amendment. So we're actually gonna end up using less of the fund balance in the general fund with this budget amendment. So there's increases in expenses. There's one carryover item, the seventy-five thousand for, under park improvements, which is for retaining wall. And so it's kind of a placeholder at this point, because we're gonna see what we can do with that seventy-five thousand. There's three retaining walls, and it's actually gonna cost more than the seventy-five thousand to replace all three, and so we're going to discuss how to use that seventy-five thousand and what order.
Kristen, can you put the mic closer to you? And on YouTube, it's hard to hear on our YouTube recording unless it's on the mic, so.
Yep, sorry about that, okay.
And then just really quick for, just for clarification, the revised one that you just sent out the afternoon, this afternoon, the only change was the aquatics pavers, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, just so it doesn't alarm anybody, and we had already talked about that, but didn't get it in here, so.
Right, we had talked about it in our budget kickoff meeting about getting the pavers removed, and I didn't have an, an amount or timing for that until today. Okay, so that's.
That was on me, sorry.
I do have a question, Kristen, I don't, we haven't really talked about it in enough detail, and Adam, you're gonna do a little bit of research, but if, if we do decide, whether we do or don't, but if we do decide that we want some, to beef up our entry signs a little bit, would that need to be specifically budgeted for, or would that be handled within a, a line item of, of another budget item?
We, we would be looking at that for the upcoming fiscal year.
Yes.
And.
Versus an amendment.
Yes, and so, yeah, I've asked Mike to look into that and our facilities manager, and get some costs and locations and where that may be placed. And then in the kickoff, we had even said maybe that's even part of the twenty-twenty-four centennial celebration, where we loop some of that all in together, so, so we will, we're planning to budget something this year. What that entails, I can't tell you yet, so.
Thank you.
So does anyone have any questions on the general fund, any of the budget amendments in the general fund?
I, I do have a question, it's not specifically directed to this, but it, it does have a bearing on that. I know that the state legislature was looking at increasing the amount of carryover reserve fund. Do we have an update on that, is it going through?
Last I heard, it was supported, and it would increase that to thirty-five percent of our general fund balance, or it can go up to thirty-five percent of our general fund.
Because I know Kristen's always trying to balance that, if you get a little bit more headroom, that.
I, I would have to search that bill and see where it's at, but expectation that from everything I had heard was that would pass.
Okay.
Yeah, last I saw it was still in committee.
Okay.
But it was expected to pass. Yeah, they can act on it this week. Okay, and so slight increase in the CDA, the RDA, fund, this for CDA on the seven hundred north. And then we've got water fund increases in, in expenses, and sewer and stormwater, and then the recreation. I didn't know how much detail you want, I've got a lot of detail in the reports, but not sure how much you want me to go over here in this meeting.
Love the budget amendment notes, that's my favorite page of all of that.
Yeah, and I tried to update the notes this year, over this time, to include the amount, so you're not having to go back and forth.
You're always so helpful.
So any questions?
I don't have any.
We good? Any questions from the audience?
She's good.
Okay. I'm ready.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Van, a second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now out of the public hearing. Do we need to take action on that with the amendment, I assume?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash four dash R, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget fee schedule amendment as presented. The, the, the latest one.
Sounds good, a second by Randy, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Does that passes unanimously, thank you. Isn't that great? Man, we're moving right along. Now we need to recess, someone want to make a motion, recess into the Linden City Redevelopment Agency?
I will make a motion to recess into the Linden Development Agency, Redevelopment Agency.
And we have a second by Randy, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now, I guess, in the redevelopment. I love it, you don't change your position, but you're there, okay, I'll call it to order, let's do a roll call vote, Mike?
Mike Venturi, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Jeff Aserson, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Okay, and Jake's excused, thank you. Let's go ahead and discuss the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty. I know our memories are great, and you've all read those, they're very limited in nature, but.
They looked very good to me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if, unless there's more discussion on that.
Oh, that's great, Randy.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Van, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes unanimously. Motion being ordered to open a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Van, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing.
All right, so now we have a budget amendment for the RDA. It's for CDA on seven hundred north, and it's to increase the professional and technical services eighteen hundred dollars, and decrease the appropriation to fund balance by that amount. And that extra cost was unanticipated, but it was for COVID-related services so that we can extend the life of the CDA.
Yeah, in the special legislative session that they held last fall, they passed a bill that enables us to extend these CDAs or RDAs by two or three years. And so we will be working with Jason or his staff from Lewis Young, Robertson, and Burningham to help walk us through that process and make sure everything's legit with the CDA. There's a lot of denoting requirements and hoops to jump through, and so we appreciate their guidance.
So they're, Jason's just gonna take this and tweak it to extend it out, and that's what the eighteen hundred dollars is for, is just taking that.
Correct.
And just revamping that.
Yep, so hopefully here, I checked with Mike, and he thought that would be summer or fall, once the session ends, that we'll bring that forward. We have, I think it's twelve or eighteen months to get it done, so.
Now, on your budget amendment notes in this section, look like they're the same as the budget amendment notes in the other one we just did in the staff report, but there's some little yellow highlights, is that?
So the yellow is just the RDA that we're dealing with.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on that? It sounds like a great move, because that allows it to live longer.
Yeah.
Which is beneficial for us, so. Okay, any public comment? Hearing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a second, Carolyn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to reconvene.
No.
Motion to approve the resolution. That's right, yeah.
Make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash one dash RDA, amending the current fiscal twenty-twenty-one RDA budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Now, it would be appropriate if someone so chooses to go back into city council.
I'll make the motion to adjourn from the Redevelopment Agency Board meeting and reconvene back into the city council meeting.
We have a motion, a second by Carolyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, thank you. We have a, well, we have an item on our agenda that, as you noticed, the red letters, this needs to be continued, so I assume we need to make a motion to continue.
Just so you're aware, I prepared this motion, and I put a call out to the Division of Wildlife Resources. Jason Vernon, who is the director for the Central Division that covers Linden, contacted me last week and said, hey, I would really like to continue this so that we can come to the meeting, we can answer any questions on, on how we operate, because they do have to make a recommendation to the State Wildlife Board as well, and he'd just like to be involved in the process. I have a meeting set up to go over this with him a week from tomorrow, and so we'll be looking to get it back on the agenda either the first or second meeting in, in April. So that's what we're doing. So we have to renew our permit annually? Well, no, we have to, any ordinance limiting hunting within city boundaries has to be approved by the State Wildlife Board. The state controls all hunting throughout the state, and there's a specific statute that says cities cannot limit it without approval from the State Wildlife Board. And we adopted an ordinance clear back in nineteen eighty-five, and we recently amended it in two thousand and fifteen. We had some people that were hunting in the city, I went to prosecute them, and a very diligent attorney in, in researching discovered that error, that we had never submitted it to the State Wildlife Board. So we were able to prosecute those individuals on some other matters, the use of weapons and things like that, but our hunting ordinance needs to go through this official process to be effective, so.
And, and our, our density has changed significantly since the eighties, and so, yeah.
So I'll be meeting with them, making whatever changes, talk to them briefly about it. I, I think we're in a pretty good spot, I think our, our ordinance, our ordinance is designed to allow hunting where it's safe, even within the city limits, not a blanket prohibition, and I think that's what they're looking for, but, but I'll have more information on that, so. Well, I'm taking it we didn't have any takers on the cages this year.
We have never had any applicants.
That's what I thought.
Thus far.
I'll make a motion there, we're ready for that. I move to continue ordinance number twenty-twenty-one dash two dash O, amending chapter eight point two-four of the Linden City Code, regulating hunting within Linden City as suggested.
Second.
We have a motion by Carolyn, a second by Randy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Item number eleven is a discussion item on ranked choice voting, and there's been quite a bit of discussion at the state level on both sides of that, so. I guess, who's gonna lead out, do you want to give a little?
I'll just give you a quick overview, hopefully you've read through, this was, this first page was quotes from Amelia Powers Gardner, who administered the ranked choice voting for Payson and Vineyard last year. As, as a Payson resident, I received one of those ballots, it was pretty straightforward, all, only thing on it was council members, and so you just ranked your first, second, third, fourth, and it was pretty simple. And so I included a link there at the bottom, if you haven't watched that, this is just a quick video that the state actually helped these two cities produce some informational videos as part of those pilot programs. Has anybody had a chance to view this?
I did.
Yeah. If we want to participate in this, we have to give notice by April fifteenth, and so we scheduled tonight just for a discussion item, get your input, your thoughts, and if you want to proceed, then we would at our next meeting adopt a resolution or some formal action to indicate that, yes, we want to proceed with this, and then we send notice to the state and to the county. Something to consider financially, we, so we've contracted with the county to administer these mail-in elections. Mail-in turnout was significantly higher when we've done a mail-in versus an in-person voting, and so that, it's been very positive with the mail-in option as far as turnout in Linden. With ranked choice voting, you're not required to have a primary, and because you're ranking how many candidates that you may get, so if you have twelve, you're ranking twelve. You don't have to have a primary to eliminate people down to just two for each seat. The county sent us their estimated cost for administering the elections. This year, they are having, expecting an increase in those costs, it is estimated at sixteen thousand dollars for a primary and sixteen thousand for the general. So moving to, just as far as a financial consideration, not holding a primary would save Linden City sixteen thousand. We only need a primary if we have enough people file for office, so that's always an unknown. Last, last time, we did not have a primary, and so we didn't have a cost there that we had budgeted for anyway. But just information, so.
I'd like to, I mean, there is discussion at the state legislature right now on, on this particular issue, both pros and cons, and personally, I mean, it seems like our timing, we have to let, notify them by April.
April fifteenth.
Fifteenth, so we have two council meetings before then, the legislature will be through by March fifth. Maybe that information that comes from that, the pros and cons, could be valuable in our discussion. Or if we want to move ahead right now, I'm fine either way, I just, just FYI.
Well, Carolyn was kind enough to send something out, like all of us here, I've, I've studied quite extensively, looked at other areas and looked at the pros and the cons. I just, Carolyn, you seem to think that there's some unintended consequences, I think, if I'm reading between the lines, are there some things that we might not be interested in having it for certain reasons? Would you mind just briefly sharing your thoughts?
Well, where you look at where it's been used around the country, you know, there's definitely some benefits to it, but there's also some other things that occur that don't happen in, in traditional methodology, and so I was just sharing some of those articles for you to read, but, you know, for example, there's been elections where the candidate, so ranked choice voting requires that someone, you keep doing rounds and working down the list of the ranking until someone is a fifty percent. you keep doing rounds and working down the list of the ranking until someone is a fifty percent or greater winner. And what has happened in some regions of the country is maybe the first round, the first place person who in a traditional, uh, election would have been the winner. Say they had thirty-eight or forty-three percent. Well, with, as the further rounds go, they get bumped, and it's created some lawsuits.
Yeah.
Um, the other, some of the other things that maybe were cons were, uh, you have a huge plethora of candidates, say twelve, as, as Adam says, not, not knowing if we would ever get that, but not everyone goes to the trouble to rank all twelve. And so, you know, they may rank the first three or four that they know of, or they, it's just, they don't go through that, um, process. And so uh, if their first three choices get bumped out or discarded, then it essentially, people have said, well, my vote didn't count.
Yeah.
And it doesn't at that point.
It doesn't at that point, right.
Yeah.
So, and, and if you read, you know, some of the articles that discuss the pros and cons, there's, there were other things besides that. I don't recall all of them now, but so it's something to consider. I think we should discuss it some more, and I like the mayor's suggestion of looking at, you know, other, making a data-driven decision on this. Not just because it seems easier, because I think there will be some things to, to look at how it's played out.
I'm not sure I'd buy the, the argument that it, it saves the candidates money on campaigning. I realize that we don't have a, we won't have a primary under this form, but you really think that a candidate's not gonna campaign?
Well, that was one of the things brought up in one of those articles I brought to you, is if you looked at like San Francisco mayoral, mayoral race, millions were still spent.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. I don't necessarily buy that argument as a pro.
I mean, certainly, we, we have savings potentially in administering
Right.
it, which is a pro, but for candidates, not necessarily. It hasn't always been seen.
I'm gonna go on a limb here and ask a question that, they say there's no dumb questions, but perhaps this might be. I, I'm still trying to internalize why the person that just is eliminated, just outright, that person's votes go to the second place?
Their second vote goes to, it's distributed.
Different rounds.
This video is really short. It's like three minutes.
The video that Amelia provided.
Okay, I did not watch that, I'll admit.
Yeah, throw it up. Let me, uh, let's watch this really quick.
We're, we're streaming through this meeting.
Participating in a pilot program for ranked choice voting in the two thousand nineteen municipal election, the first of its kind in Utah. Ranked choice voting is different from traditional voting in that you rank the candidates on the ballot from your favorite to least favorite. Check it out. Let's say we're voting for one open spot on city council. The candidates are blue, green, orange, red, and yellow. This first column is one voter's ballot. Their first choice is blue, second, green, third, red, fourth, yellow, and fifth, orange. The second column represents a different voter's choices. Their first choice is red, second, yellow, third, blue, fourth, green, and fifth, orange. Each column here represents a different voter's ballot. After votes are completed, the candidate who receives more than fifty percent of first choice votes will be declared a winner. If no candidate receives more than fifty percent of first choice votes, then we will proceed to round by round ranked choice voting. As you can see here, blue received more than fifty percent of the votes in the first round, which means they are declared the winner. But what if we're running an election for two open city council spots? Here's how that would work. Because blue already won, we won't include them when counting the votes for the second position. In round one of counting for the second position, no other color has received more than fifty percent of the votes. We will proceed to round two. At this point, the candidate with the fewest votes is eliminated. In this case, orange must be removed. Unlike traditional voting with ranked choice voting, the votes for the eliminated candidate, orange, are transferred to the voter's next preferred candidate. By transferring the votes from orange to their second choice, green receives more than fifty percent of votes to win. And what if we're going to elect somebody for a third open spot on city council? Here, we'll add orange back in, because they didn't have enough votes to win the second spot, but still have a chance of winning a different open spot. Now, we start the ballot counting over again to fill the third spot. As you can see, red wins as the third color. So although the ballot looks different this year, it's simple now that you've learned how it works and why ranking your preferred candidates matters. To learn more, visit Paysonvotes.com.
I think it's, if you watch that again, you'll notice, you know, green got the second position, but green was not the second place winner in the first round.
Thanks, Carol.
And I, I think I got my question clarified too. I, I was misunderstanding.
So in a traditional situation, pink would have had the second council seat. Because they had twenty-nine, you know, it wouldn't, it doesn't, because it requires that fifty percent threshold, it does sometimes change up.
So the votes, the votes that are, the, the loser, the one that's just eliminated outright, they don't go to the second candidate. It goes to their second choice.
Their choice.
Their choice. That's where, that's where the disconnect was for me.
Some people like that because they say, well, if my first choice didn't make it, I get, you know, my second choice gets some priority.
Your vote's not wasted, or?
Unless you, only if you ranked everybody. If you didn't choose a ranking, if you didn't go one, two, three, four, five down the list, you just picked the first couple, then yeah, you wouldn't have more to push up in the next round.
So to Carolyn's point, this, this was, uh, responses from the city recorder, from Payson and Vineyard. And Payson's mentioned that Payson had three council seats open during the ballot count. After the first candidate was elected, the third-place candidate jumped over the second-place candidate to be elected. The race between third and fourth wasn't even close. So those, the, the first round, the, there was a clear leader that somebody had more than fifty percent, just like the example that we watched. And so that person won, and then on the that second round of counting, the original third-place candidate actually jumped because they had more second and third and fourth
Rankings.
rankings by other individuals.
Still more to come. Really up to you guys.
Well, I, I was kind of, I have a lot to say, if that's okay. I was hoping that a lot of us would be sent. I appreciate Carolyn and all the things you put out there. These are things that are concerning to me, and what you, um, put out there was extremely important information. If we haven't had the opportunity to look at that a little bit more, um, I encourage you to look at the things that Carolyn put out. There's lots of things about ranked choice voting that are more concerning than they are, um, positive for me. I, I understand from administrative cost and, um, for the cities, um, for our budget, it's, it'd be a win for us administratively. It's easy to get that counted, to get it done. Um, for me, I have problems with, um, some simple things, like even the contraction of the, um, timeline of, of, if we don't have a primary and move, we won't have to have the filings until August, if I understand it right, and the campaigning time. Even, let's just say we've got an unusual amount for Linden, um, have six or eight, I mean, maybe eight candidates coming up, coming for you and you as, if, if you and Jake come up this time. We've had, what, what if we had eight candidates? You're trying to get all of that information to the, to the voters in a very compressed amount of time. And I, I, there's just so many things that are, um, un, uneasy for me to, to digest. I have a problem with, um, with the, I think, I, to me, it discounts or dilutes the, the saying of, um, one voice, one vote, that you get to vote. I don't know, it just dilutes it in such a way, and I, um, just encourage us to really look at this deeply before the next one. In November, I found online, the Highland City Council had a wonderful presentation. It was like an hour long, um, with Stan Lockhart from the Utah, um, what is it, the, uh, uh, the Utah, uh, what is this?
He's pushing ranked choice. He's, he's running his own, it's his own page, basically, yeah.
Pardon?
It's his own push.
Yes, it, yes, it's his own push. And he uses, he'll, he'll tell you, if you watch this, the Highland City Council, November tenth, I think it was, presentation, there's him and, um, a gentleman from Lehigh, uh, from Highland that actually pushed this a long time before that. And then a gal named Wendy Hart, who was the opposition to this. And it's a great understanding from both sides. I encourage you to look at that. Um, I just found that this afternoon. And, um, and you get a good concept of really what both sides are saying without maybe us having to have the presentation brought to us. But if that's something we could maybe even, if you want to ask those questions, it'd be something we could do for them, with them. It's, it's just, um, HighlandCity.org, or, but I can, I'll send a link out to everybody. But, uh, there was a lot of things that, and it created more questions, more, um, negatives for me than it ever was, than I ever even imagined, but there's issues like, we have to think about, it's, the numbers for more spoiled votes go up. That, uh, people, and I know that people can get this. I, I don't particularly care for the way that, um, that video portrays it. Any one of us who've ever worked with ranked choice voting in our caucuses know that there's an easier way to show that concept to, um. And I know, I know that, um, Stan Lockhart talks about that the, one of the, um, things that pushed this forward, for him in his mind, was the way that the Utah Republicans, um, when they went through the ranked choice voting in their state meetings, um, how they embraced this and how wonderful it is. Well, I've been there multiple times, as well as county ones. I, of course, between caucus and everything else, you know that you want to get out of their fast. It's a whole different animal. And to sit and wait for a second and third round ballots, you're just pulling your hair out. You know, so I got things to do. I got a barbecue later today. And you're there for hours. You want to get that done in a, in a more timely way. Well, I think it's a different animal, and it's less abilities to be able to possibly manipulate it in that arena. I don't like it for, for what we do here, um, um, across the board, and I really would not like Linden to adopt it. So now you really know how I feel and going forward, but I, I will send you that link, and I think you could have some, maybe either questions answered or questions formed.
That's good. Thank you. Any consolation? My wife doesn't like it and doesn't want it. She said about no.
Discussion only, and it, I, yeah, if there's not an inclination to keep exploring it, but there's no reason for us to do so, so I, I just quickly asked Jake what he thought, and he was just kinda like, I don't know, the devil's in the details, and it was kind of a, I don't know enough about it to really say one way or the other, but he sounded hesitant is the way I would phrase it. And so if that's the general feeling, I'm just throwing this out there. We, as staff, have no, no desire one way or the other. We're just, this isn't.
I don't think it's a slam dunk that it, I mean, there are some positives to it, but I don't think it's a slam dunk that it's so po, all positive that we should just jump right in feet first, and maybe, maybe it's inevitable that it's coming down the pike, but I think we can, you know, still kind of watch it and get educated about it.
We could put it on the number if we wanted to revisit it.
Another, another year and see.
Yeah, from, from my standpoint, as we have used it in caucus meetings and familiar with it, uh, there were so, there's been so much positive types of things about it initially, but more and more are starting to come of people's concerns with it. So for me, I would like to see what some of the latest things are, but right now I'm not anxious at all to proceed with it with this next election.
Well, with, with...
But more information I want to be able to.
Okay, and maybe that's in the next year. Is that, I don't see a reason to put this on the agenda again from everybody's comments. Is that?
Take the foot off the gas pedal and, uh, let's, let's.
I'll send that link out regardless, just so you have some more information if you wish.
That's your feeling there, too?
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'll, I, I want to kind of see what comes out of the legislature, because they, they are having a pretty good discussion, and it's both sides, and, you know, that, that might be helpful to reference and just.
Yeah, I was at a meeting last week with, it was probably three quarters of the city managers from Utah County, and several cities had discussions, but the question was asked, is anybody moving forward with this? Vineyard and Payson are gonna continue with that. Um, and Lehigh had a discussion, several others, theirs was in the news, several others had had discussions, but nobody was moving forward that was in that meeting, so just an FYI.
Okay.
Um, ULCT sent out, did you, I just saw this. The email came this afternoon. They, they are going to have the mid-year conference, both in-person and virtual.
I think a lot of outdoor activities they were planning to have as well.
But the mid-year, which is typically in Salt Lake, that will be then in St. George? Is that the way I'm understanding?
No, the mid-year is always in St. George.
Okay.
April conference.
So they do it on a different, they do it fiscal year then?
I know in the past you've said we wanted to kind of limit potentially how many attend. What, what is the thought on that?
We, we put all of our travel budget back in, our, into the budget in October when we did that amendment. Um, revenues are very good. I, I don't see any reason if, if several of you want to attend that we can't do that.
I'd like to. But do, is there a date? I looked on that, Carolyn.
They do have dates.
First to the twenty-third.
Twenty-first?
Book hotels fast, because it goes quick if you're staying in a hotel.
I want you to have a place you can stay.
I have an out, I can stay there.
So, so.
This is very old, appreciate it.
Yes, I've all been.
So, city, we pay for the twenty-first and the twenty-second?
Pay for the registration.
That's for rooms?
Let me, let me pull it up here really quick.
And one other thing too, Adam, if you, if you remember, the city paid a registration fee for me
I'm excited if people are actually going places and doing stuff.
You reimbursed me, so I owe the city.
Yeah, I do recall you mentioned that, sorry.
I need to take that money that you've already paid me and apply that towards my registration.
Okay, I am making a note to follow up with you on that here really quick.
If I'm not mistaken, are we through?
I think we're through.
We're, we're just gonna try to distract them.
Watch, be nice.
I heard something.
Over here, what was it?
Come on, Dan.
Motion to adjourn.
I said it. I second it.
All in favor? Aye, 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 aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Kath, I wrote.
Well, between Van and.
Van takes it. I'll, I'll take the second.
Randy will take the second.
So the conference, Mike, it's twen, April twenty-first through twenty-third, so we would cover those. Yeah, those nights. Yeah.
I looked up that accumulated fund balance, bill, and it's been passed by the Senate House.
Oh, thanks.
It did?
Good.
Fantastic. I think, that'd be great.
Just on first blush, if you want to, I don't know what you're thinking about, but.
Well, Adam, you get to go home early tonight.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.